Testing, one, two, three, four. Test, one, two, three.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is six o'clock PM. If everyone can take their seats, we'll begin promptly. Good evening. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order for November 29th, 2022 at six o'clock PM. We give the floor to the Honorable Councilman William Parker, Jr. to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, Brother President. Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to introduce you to Pastor Dustin McClellan. He's going to be sharing with us this morning our invocation.
God, we thank you so much for this gathering together tonight in the name of Jesus. And thank you for the elected leaders, the mayor and council now and all the folks here, that they have the heart of our city in mind, right by the reverence. Pray protection over them physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually. And pray for our residents.
Tonight, especially as we get close to the holidays, that you would be with each one. They may have challenges, may be struggling, may need help. Would you show each one of us how we can be that help in their lives? And we pray tonight for the business here at hand, that you would give these leaders the ability to make sound decisions, that they would have sound and right judgment. We pray for peace to be in this room, that we would disagree at times without being disagreeable, and that ultimately you would move this great city forward. We thank you for tonight. We thank you for this gathering. It's in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence if it can stay standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We remember now those in our community that we have lost since we gathered last, those that are in your families, in your congregations, your neighborhoods, your business and occupations, and just those friends, colleagues, and neighbors. We also are specifically offering up the names that have been shared with us or that we know we have lost in recent weeks. Since I haven't explicitly read them, it's longer than usual, but in alphabetical order, we remember also Virginia Abney, Leroy Barbie, Gloria Bowie, Judy Burt Lorenz, Cornell Coleman, Felicia Coleman, Patricia Collins, Tanya Danquo Smith, Valerie Davis, Antonio Dominguez Escamilla, Evelyn Nene Ford, Ronald Fowler, Sr., June French Snyder, Vera Fusilié, Florencia Garcia, Calvin Greenhouse, Jr., Tony Hardy, Sr., Jean Harrington, 96 years young, from East Yale in District Four, Jaden Humphrey Lavalley, Louis Jacob, Phyllis Jackson Draper, Helen Johnson, Yvonne Johnson, Kathleen Lawinger, Luis Lucio, Shaniqua Milton, Nicholas Minor, Melvin Phillips, Sr., Brandy Potter, Deja Powell, Bruce Quinn, Modesta Ramirez, Kevin Robertson, Daniel Rodriguez, Jr., Guillermo Memo Rosado, Robert Sevigny, Chuck Shaw, Kim Simmons, Forrest Smith, Jr., Robert Smith, Jr., Fred Walker, Margaret Williams, Marvell Vaughn, Carol Viverette, Rudy Yapo, who you may remember from the Yapo Computer Center, and in my family, Joanne Banks Miracle, who grew up at 263 South Eda Street in Pontiac's East Side District Seven. So those are the names of those that we know have passed in recent weeks. But we also reflect on and hold in our prayers Paris Marve, who's 32 years old and a Pontiac resident currently has not been seen for the last four months. She has housing challenges as well as struggles with mental illness. So please, if you can keep in your heart and your mind and also an eye out for Paris Marve, please join us as a community for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established, all members are present in voting. We now move to motion to adopt and approve this evening's agenda. Is there such a motion?
Some move, support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we approve this evening's agenda as presented. I do know of one amendment I would like to request. We right now have currently number three, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2360, which would have been a first reading of multiple readings. Since that has not been prepared or provided, I ask that that be postponed, that first reading be postponed for one week until the next regular city council meeting.
Make a motion.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we postpone that for one week. Any discussion? I do want to share as well that in an earlier draft of the agenda posted in previous days, it also referenced a zoning ordinance on the related topic of recreational marijuana. That is required to go to the Planning Commission first. It would not come to the city council unless and until it follows the appropriate channel through the city's Planning Commission. And I just want to share that context in case anyone was looking for that item as well that is not in this agenda.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So number two is not in this agenda?
Number two is, number three is what we're proposing to postpone for one week. And then there was a, previously a number four that spoke to a zoning, zoning ordinance amendment. Hearing no further.
It wasn't number two? I thought you were.
We're discussing number three.
No.
We don't want it on number three right now.
The motion before us is the postponement of one week of the current number three, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2360. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of that amendment to the agenda, postponement for one week for the appropriate preparation and circulation of the actual amendment ordinance before we have a first reading. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Can we remove item number two because since we just received that today, there is no way that I can consider this to be like a real first reading for this ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So we have in the agenda, the current number two is the City of Pontiac Adult Use Marijuana Business Ordinance. City council members received copies of that about half an hour before this meeting, and our standard practice is that we like to have adequate time to review it. Another possible consideration for this is this would be considered like the pre-first reading. I anticipate that this will have many first readings, but because it's now just been prepared and drafted, we can have the administration sort of give an initial presentation, and then essentially next week would be like the first reading. But it would also give time for the clerk to nonetheless post it, so that way it can begin the process of the community or the public knowing that it exists. But my commitment is that this is not a matter we want to be hasty with, we don't want to rush, and it will likely take multiple weeks for us to finesse it to a way that's to the satisfaction of the city council. So it is truly this council's pleasure, but because it's, there are attorneys here that can speak to it in terms of what's been drafted initially, there might be value for us, at least having that initial presentation for the community and for us. And then we post, you know, we essentially table it or move forward, and we begin the first deliberation and deep review of it next week and the weeks that follow. But it is ultimately your decision. Mayor Grimal has a hand.
Yeah, thank you. Is this on?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, President McGinnis. You know, we're flexible on this. We got it to city council as soon as the city's attorneys at Clark Hill got a kind of final draft, presentable draft to us. And the one thing I do want to emphasize is I don't think anybody thinks that we should be voting on this next week because it does require quite a bit of discussion. The other thing that I want to emphasize is that in addition to this, there will need to be a zoning ordinance passed ultimately by city council. That was originally on the agenda for tonight, but we've been advised that that needs to begin first by going to the Planning Commission. So that will need to go to the Planning Commission and then later come before city council for at least two readings. And our attorneys have said that they would recommend that the final vote on that correspond at the same meeting as a final vote on the adult use marijuana ordinance itself. And so I just want to emphasize that because although oftentimes we have two readings, that's not even advisable here with this proposed adult use marijuana ordinance because we can't very well vote on that next week when we won't have the zoning ordinance here until, you know, a couple of weeks at least down the road. So I think, as President McGinnis said, it's really a question as to whether we want a pre-first reading tonight of the draft prepared by Clark Hill so that Clark Hill can present their rationale in drafting this the way they did and provide some explanation for further discussion, not just next week, but in the next couple of weeks.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone. President Pro Tim Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I guess my concern is that to get something at the tenth of the hour, and I'm unable to read it thoroughly or even draw conclusions or questions, it kind of bothers me. And I understand that it was the Thanksgiving holiday. But in a sense, if we have, if there's no rush for this this week, I prefer to have it, be able to read it over the week and come prepared to ask questions next week.
Councilman Rutherford.
So my issue is not, I understand the time, but I also understand the timeline, that people in the community and those abroad are wanting to hear what we're going to do. And there was a promise made in September by this administration that we were going to do this in November. So at what point do we start? I get that we want time. I'm a stickler for time too, but if we're just doing a pre-read and not a pre-discussion, I don't see the problem in that. That's it.
Councilman Goodman.
So the problem that I have is the fact that the people expect us to do this correctly. Like, I think timelines are a very important thing, but if the timeline for making a good cake is an hour and you want to do it in 30 minutes, I'm sorry, that's not going to happen. So to have, to actually give us a chance to read this because recognize that not to the clerk's office's fault, we did not receive the agenda for this week until yesterday. We didn't receive this until I sat down the day. So for that to be the case, I'm sorry. Like, we can have some sort of discussion, possibly have a short presentation, but for us to have just received this and we're expected to kind of just go along with the tracks for a train that we just now found out that we were getting on, opposed to where if we would have gotten this on Friday and had the chance to look over this, because I know that my colleagues and I, and yourself included, do read this. And being able to read it before a meeting and then being able to come to this and have the chance to ask questions when we first come to this is an extremely important thing. So while I recognize that timelines are important, I'd rather do this correctly, especially because I know personally friends who have written marijuana laws and legislation, and I know how much time this takes.
Anyone who should speak for a first time?
Bray.
Nicholson, then James.
I, yeah, I agree with putting it off so we have some more time to go through it. I think there are people who are here to hear more about this. So I think for, and the attorneys are here as well, to not waste the taxpayers' dollar and having them here already, I do think it would be good to hear from them. I think then, you know, clearly we can't ask substantive questions, but there will be more, you know, weeks to come to be able to ask those questions. But I think a discussion item or a presentation is certainly in order.
With President, Councilman James, then Councilman Parker.
Yeah, I think everyone's point is well taken, and I am also concerned that, you know, we have not had a chance to even read through this. But I do think, given where we are, that I would be comfortable with either calling it a pre-presentation or even a first because we are not limited to how many times we look at this. So there's no reason why it can't be, number one, because we're really not limited. We're, we need to go through this very carefully. But I do understand everybody's comment. I'm concerned about it as well. But I would very much like to hear what the attorneys here have to say, what their rationale is, so that as we begin to read through it, we'll have some, some background information as to how they thought through some of these things. So.
Thank you.
That's my position on it.
And that was my thought as well. Thank you, Brother President. But that was my thought as well. Can we just move it up to be a special presentation and let the legal team that's here do their presentation as a special presentation, and then we can still get the information that they're going to give us today without affecting the overall voting that we should do on the, as it was, the ordinance that is at hand.
To that question, which is a very solid idea that I know others are moving in that, along that track, we can pass this motion to postpone for one week of the particular first reading and then amend the agenda to add a special presentation on the topic so that way we maximize the, sort of that introductory rollout for the community and those that came thinking that that would be part of the discussion tonight. So any further discussion on the motion to postpone for one week on City of Pontiac Adult Use Marijuana Business Ordinance first reading?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. So I'm clear. I thought it was to remove from the agenda.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, my default's always to postpone for one week. Your motion that you made, Councilman Goodman, was removal, so I don't want to misrepresent. The motion that's before us is removal of that item on the agenda, which of course does not preclude us from bringing it back any particular week. Yes, sir?
And so, and with the removal of this, we can still motion to make a special, have it be a special presentation. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll do that.
Any further discussion on the removal of the current item number two from the agenda? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on that amendment to the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to make the adult use ordinance as a special presentation from the city's attorney.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Rutherford, that we add a second special presentation, City of Pontiac Adult Use Marijuana Business. That's what we can call it. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the amendment to the agenda of adding a second special presentation.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
No.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six yays, one nay.
All right, that motion carries. The amendment is incorporated into the main motion now before us, adoption of the agenda as amended. Currently, the amendments have added a special presentation and removed those, removed or postponed respectively the two ordinance creations or amendments. Any other amendments, discussions, clarification on the agenda before us as amended? Speakers list having been exhausted, roll call on adoption of the, this evening's meeting agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We'll proceed accordingly. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. It includes last week's regular meeting council minutes. Hearing no discussion, which isn't even permitted on a consent agenda. Roll call and adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. We are at the first special presentation, introducing the City of Pontiac's new planning manager and economic development manager. We give the floor to Mayor Grimal and the City of Pontiac's Community Development Director, Rachel Lockren.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to invite our Community Development Director, Rachel Lockren, to the podium to introduce her to new hires, both of whom we're really, really excited about. They both come with a tremendous amount of experience and talent, and we're really, really excited to have these two positions filled. And without further ado, Director Lockren.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for hearing me this evening. I am here to introduce, and actually, may I ask you guys to come join me up here? I'm here to introduce our new Economic Development Manager and our new Planning Manager. Deborah Younger is our new Economic Development Manager. She comes to us with over 20 years of economic development experience. She has held various positions related to economic development in cities such as Newport News, Virginia, Columbus, Ohio, and Detroit, Michigan. Choosing the right person to head the Economic Development Division is crucial for the success of the Community Development Department, and I believe that housing is front of mind for many people in this city. This is one of the reasons that I have chosen Deborah to fill this position. Deborah has held numerous housing roles and has helped to develop thousands of units, both affordable and market rate. Mark Yandrick is our new Planning Manager. He has 20 years of experience working with local government in both the public and private sector. For the past 10 years, Mark has worked in planning, with the last three spent as the Planning Manager of Centerville, Ohio. I'm happy to introduce Mark to you as the new head of the Planning Division, and even happier to state that he now calls the City of Pontiac home. I'd like to invite you to ask any questions, if you have them, for our new staff members.
Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you. Could you say your name one more time, ma'am? Could you come to the mic? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Deborah Younger.
Yes, Ms. Younger. Good evening. First of all, thank you and welcome to Pontiac. I'm so excited.
Thank you.
Recently, there was an article in the newspaper today about housing and receiving grants from the Oakland County, excuse me, from the Oakland County to be able to have more affordable housing. How do you feel like your experience could help you impact that for Pontiac to receive more than a million dollars that we've already received?
Sure. Well, in addition to developing housing across the country, one of my other areas of expertise is, in fact, grant writing. I've worked with Ford Foundation, major foundations across the country. When I was in Detroit, in fact, I was able to procure over $30 million in grant funding. So while that's not particularly what I was brought here to do, grant funding, in fact, I anticipate that as we look forward to how we develop housing, that I will get involved with the grant-making, writing team and grant-making team in the city. So I've had vast experience in both market rate and affordable housing. For those of you don't know, it's multifaceted, multi-funded, and so having experience in both grant writing, federal and state and local funding resources is key to, in fact, developing housing, and I'll be able to bring that expertise to Pontiac, and I'm excited to do it.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Goodman.
So I think to my colleagues, it's no surprise that I wanted to immediately jump on the fact of like affordable housing while we had this conversation. So a real important question that I do have is like, what do you, I guess, in your philosophy foresee some of the ways that Pontiac can begin to solve our housing problem? Because we also recognize that not only do we have an issue with affordable housing, but attainable market rate housing and the entirety of. but attainable market rate housing and the entirety of the, the climb needed to allow people to find reasonable housing for themselves.
Sure, and well, I think what we really need to do is look at what is going to be the housing strategy for the City of Pontiac, and that's something that will have to be developed. And obviously, the placement and location of housing and how we divide that housing up across the city is key, we don't want to concentrate any type of housing, diversity of housing throughout the City of Pontiac would be my goal, there shouldn't be an area where mixed-use development and mixed economic development in terms of affordability is one of the things that I strive for, I've done developments where there was affordable housing right next door to market rate housing, and integrating those into the community is one of the things that I would be, hope to be able to achieve.
Other discussions on this special presentation? Councilman Rutherford?
Lastly, I, I forgot your name, sorry, but thank you, ma'am, what's your name one more time?
My name is Mark Yandrick.
So you originally come from Ohio, correct, in a small rural area, correct?
Correct, it's suburb of Dayton, Ohio, and not far from Cincinnati, correct?
Okay, and what was the biggest project that you've worked on when you were at Dayton, Ohio, and explain to me how you were able to use both, both public and private funds to achieve the goal that you were trying to achieve?
Really, two big projects in my time with the city, one is the Cornerstone Development, really $85 million, where it was a public-private partnership, and we were actually able to secure over a million dollars for a public park in part of, as part of a mixed-use development, it's really trend, and it's finishing construction actually at the moment, and it's been transformative, I think, for the community to have additional resource, not only to live, work, and play. The other thing I've been very involved with is our downtown, which is called Uptown in Centerville, and I was involved in the master planning process with, with a committee, and we also worked with a consultant to transform our zoning code and our historic guidelines to really invigorate modern development and activate spaces, and, and I think it's an important element, not just to use in downtown Pontiac, but different key points throughout the community. And there was a lot of public engagement through that process, to be able to get a good outcome that is achievable and affordable, and we've had a lot of businesses come into the City of Centerville during my time there, so.
I look forward to working with you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mayor Grimald?
I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of what's really important, we have two new employees here from, who have roots in the state of Ohio, and I can think of no better time to welcome them to Michigan than three days after a complete throttling of Ohio State by the University of Michigan on the football field.
Undefeated. Undefeated. Yell to the victor.
No, you did not go there.
Congratulations to the victors.
Councilman Goodman?
And so, I do actually have a question for you, Mr. Yandrick, yeah, because you are coming on as our Planning Manager, correct?
That is correct.
And so, one question that I do have, I care a whole lot about walkability, when it, when it comes to city development, especially in the City of Pontiac, where we have a lot of people who are not capable of driving for one reason or another, and it's extremely important for us to, to build a community that, that reflects that and can meet the needs of those people. And the, the, the main question I do have is, like, how do you, you know, see a plan to better increase walkability, to better integrate our neighborhoods and our residents with the resources that they need within a reasonable distance?
My previous experience includes being very involved in active transportation, that's not just walkability, but that's other modes of transport, and I look forward to working with the community on master planning, as for the city as a whole, but also making sure that we make key connections, not ju, not just with bike paths, which is one aspect, but also between residences and businesses, and to be able to get key resources to make it easy to, to walk, whether you have a vehicle or not, so.
Thank you, I look forward to both of you being able to join us for our monthly Economic Development Housing and Planning Subcommittee that the Pontiac City Council holds, the next one is next Monday at 9:00 AM, in the Legislative Conference Room, the community and the public are welcome to attend those monthly public meetings, but we're able to delve in from the administrative, executive side, as well as the legislative side, in terms of strategies, priorities, and policies to, to move Pontiac forward in the areas that you both will be helping helm for our municipality. My question is for Director Lockren, both the Planning Division and the Economic Development Position have had openings with positions to help full, fully staff those operations, it's a very important milestone for the community to have exemplary experienced professionals to be able to hit the ground running and, and help those divisions flourish, can you or the newly installed division managers share with us and the community what should be the expectations for when those divisions will be fully operational?
We will be posting those job descriptions within the next week, and begin interviewing as soon as possible. So we will have two planning positions posted in the Planning Division, and one position posted in the Economic Development Division.
Thank you very much, it's much needed, and it will go a long way in terms of making us even more robust, proactive, and, and efficient when processing, considering, and proactively pursuing economic development and planning strategies. Any further discussion?
Councilman James?
I just wanted to welcome both of you to the City of Pontiac, we are very happy to have people with your experience and expertise, looking forward to working with you, and also for the Planning Manager, look forward to being able to get our update to our master plan done, it is expired, and I look forward to that being one of the priorities for the city for 2023, of, of really bringing our master plan up to the vision that we have for the city. So, congratulations on the new jobs, and we are delighted to have you.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, that first special presentation, thank you all for your time and welcome again, we're now at the se, second special presentation, City of Pontiac Adult Use Marijuana Business. Mayor Grimald, Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis, I am happy to have an opportunity to do this initial presentation of the ordinance, or draft ordinance, the proposed ordinance, as we begin what I'm sure will be several weeks of discussions around this and proposed zoning ordinance as well. I want to allow the attorneys to get into the, the details and the, and the substance of it all, but I will just touch on some of the, the basic highlights here. As I think all of Council and much of the public is aware, the way that the medical marijuana ordinance was drafted is that there were five licenses set aside for medical marijuana dispensary applicants in each of five, excuse me, each of four areas here in the city. One was along the Walton Boulevard corridor, another in the Cesar Chavez corridor, a third in downtown Pontiac, and a fourth in the rest of the city. In addition, the medical marijuana ordinance did not have any numerical cap on grow facilities or processing facilities, but left those decisions to zoning ordinance determination, and by extension, the, the Planning Commission. The proposed draft ordinance that you received earlier today mirrors those four districts for 20, what we'll call non-social equity applicants, such that there are five slots for non-social equity applicants along the Walton Boulevard corridor, another five along Cesar Chavez, another five in downtown, and another five in the rest of the city for non-social equity recreational marijuana dispensary applicants. In addition, it creates another four slots that can be anywhere in the city, specifically for social equity applicants, so one must be a social equity applicant in order to put in an application for those additional four slots. All of those 24 slots would be filled through a competitive process that would involve the giving of points to applicants based on an array of criteria. In terms of, of the 20 non-social equity slots, rather than simply saying that those who have been conditionally approved for medical marijuana dispensaries automatically get those slots, the city's attorneys, Clark Hill has advised, that because the state recreational marijuana or adult use marijuana statute requires a competitive process, that we can give some additional points to those who have been conditionally approved for medical marijuana, but we can't simply give them the, the recreational licenses outright. And that's how this proposed ordinance is crafted and designed. In addition, there are three proposed Class A micro-business licenses, as well as up to six consumption lounges in the downtown area of the city only, three in the downtown north of Huron, three in the downtown south of Huron. And the reason why it's limited just to the downtown is really twofold, one is by bringing those customers downtown to consume marijuana, it's a way to try to get more people coming to our downtown, get more people actually hanging out for some time period in the downtown, hopefully supporting restaurants and other establishments downtown. So number one, it's a way to create more foot traffic downtown, the other concern is if we were to allow consumption lounges elsewhere in the city, it's more likely that residents in neighborhoods would view consumption lounges as a nuisance or a problem or a public safety risk, in particular, potentially in neighborhoods. So by limiting them to downtown, we believe that we're both amplifying the benefits of consumption lounges, while mitigating the risks and downside of consumption lounges. And without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Chuck and to Joe from Clark Hill to get into more of the details.
Good evening, members of the Council, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Deputy Mayor, and the clerk, I'm Charles Murphy with the Clark Hill Firm, based in their Birmingham office, I've been involved in the cannabis industry since about 2015, and it represents about 95% of my practice, so I'm, I've read most of the ordinances in the state, and including ordinances in other states. For this project, we probably looked at between 10 and 15 different ordinances, which I felt were kind of best, best practice ordinances, and tried to meld them into a recreational ordinance for the city that would work and comply with the state statute and, and fit in with your medical marijuana program. So, we've worked pretty thoroughly with the mayor, the deputy mayor, the clerk, and Ms. Logren on these issues for the last couple of weeks, and this is the draft that we presented today. So, it's got a lot of the standard purpose and, it has a purpose and intent provision, it basically indicates you're exercising your police power to maintain public health, safety, and welfare as a priority over the cannabis industry, and you want to protect residentially zoned properties and neighborhoods by limiting the concentration from those neighborhoods, you're going to establish fees, which, in the ordinance, if you're applying, there's a $5,000 fee, annual fee, after that, if you're renewing for $5,000. We also recognize in the intent section that Pontiac's been identified by the state of Michigan as a disproportionately impacted community for purposes of social equity programs in the marijuana industry. We also indicate we want to minimize adverse effects, and so there's various provisions in, in the ordinance that, that address that issue. We talk about legislative intent, there's some indemnification provisions in there that indemnify the city if the city is subjected to a lawsuit by properties that are adjacent to a cannabis business, where the licensee has an obligation to indemnify the city. The city also reserves the right and prerogative in the ordinance to eliminate recreational marijuana if it so chooses. There's a definitional section, a lot of it mimics the state definitions, but there are some that are specific to the city. We, we talked about, we're looking at a Class A micro-business, we looked at a regular micro-business, which is limited to 150 plants, and the licensee is restricted from obtaining marijuana product from a processor or grower, and that, that model's been challenged on the basis that it's not economically feasible, so the state had created a Class A micro-business, which allows the micro-business licensee to grow up to 300 plants, but also obtain product from processors and growers, so it, it, it's a better economic model, more sustainable economic model. The unlimited types of licenses that are described in the ordinance would include the Class A, Class B, and Class C grows, which have different plant counts than in the medical statute, also an excess grower license, a processing license, secure transport, and safety compliance facilities, those, those are all unlimited. So, with respect to those, they would have to fill out an application, we provided for, once the ordinance is enacted, there's a 60-day window where the clerk and, and his staff have 60 days to prepare, to accept applications on the unlimited licenses. With respect to the limited licenses, which would be the retail establishments, the social equity retail establishment, the Class A micro-business, and the designated consumption establishments, the clerk is required to establish a 21-day window after that 60-day period opens up, in order to accept those applications, which, because they're of a limited nature, the state recreational statute requires a competitive process if you're going to have more applicants than the number of licenses that are available. Based on your experience in the medical application period, it's clear you're going to have more applications than licenses that are available, so we looked at, you know, the best type of competitive scoring process in a way to create categories that'll be challenging for the applicants, but fair, but also more likely to avoid ties, but if there is a tie in the scoring, it goes to a random draw to break the tie. There, there has been challenges to the idea of having a tie as not being competitive, but I know there's a couple of circuit court cases indicating that having a tie, or having a random drawing to break a tie fulfills the competitive process. So we've described the licenses as permits to distinguish them from a state license, but obviously, an applicant has to obtain a state operating license and a city permit in order to operate, and pass state inspections and city inspections of all the relevant departments. For certain types of transactions, the ordinance prohibits mobile medical businesses, it also prohibits delivery, and also prohibits drive-through windows at the retail locations. For the application requirements, there's a pretty extensive section requiring a variety of things to be included in the applications, one of the provisions that city administration thought was important was requiring each applicant to disclose all of the owners, whether it's a limited license company, a partnership, or a corporation, whereas the state requirement is, if it's less than 10%, there's less of a rigorous process of vetting that occurs, but the, the city administration felt it was important to know who all the owners are in an application. There's, the typical type of vetting process that goes through there, you have to prove that you have an interest in the property, either through a lease, or a deed, or a purchase agreement, there's criminal background checks, the applicant has to produce an iChat with the application, but the city also has the prerogative to request a, a state, a state of Michigan police report, or an FBI report with regard to a criminal background check, and if the applicant's from another state, obviously, the state police agency from that state would, would be required to produce a report on their criminal background check. There's a variety of plans that are required, staffing plans, education plans, short and long-term goals, we thought it was important, a lot of times in the application process, applicants overpromise, and then they get the license, a year goes by, and when you look at what they're doing, they're not complying with the plan, so. In the renewal section of this ordinance, the applicants that are applying the applicants that are applying for renewal after one year, they're required to present factual data to the city, verifying that they've complied with their plans. For example, the staffing plan wants them to present objectives to hire a diverse representative body of Pontiac residents as employees, and to mentor those employees so that they can assume management positions or become future owners down the road. For scoring, since it is a competitive process for those limited licenses, there's a variety of categories, which we've randomly assigned points to, which obviously, the council has to look at each of those categories when it reviews the draft, and determine how you want to weight those points. We've created the scoring criteria in a way which we hope will avoid ties and reward certain things that are beneficial to the city. For example, if you're rehabilitating a blighted building or renovating a building that's been vacant for a period of time, you get some points. With respect to conditional licensees for medical marijuana, we've assigned points if you can demonstrate that you've started your development process prior to the time the application window opens for recreational marijuana. Again, there's scoring categories for planned philanthropic initiatives, neighborhood education, and outreach. And then each applicant is required to propose a social equity plan that promotes and encourages social equity participation. With respect to the social equity retailer establishments, the ordinance provides for four of those that can be located anywhere in the city. Those social equity retailer applicants can apply for other non-social equity licenses if they so desire. Those social equity retailer applicants have to demonstrate and document that they have 51% or more ownership by social equity qualifying applicants. And basically, we refer to the state definition of a social equity applicant in the ordinance. With regard to designated consumption establishments, those are limited to the downtown district with three possible locations north of Huron and three possible locations south of Huron. So there's some balance in the downtown district. Class A micro-businesses, the limit on those is three, and they can be located in any of the districts, so long as they comply with the other zoning requirements. The ordinance does allow for co-location of growers, processors, and retail establishments. If there's a co-location, there has to be a wall or partition separating each of the establishments with a separate entrance and exit. But those are allowed under the ordinance. And stacking of grow licenses is also permitted. So you can have more than one Class C license, or more than, and also get an excess grow license if you have a Class C license. The ordinance does allow for the transfer of locations and transfer of ownership. One of the issues for a long time was that a lot of cities were not allowing for a transfer of assets, and were restricting transfers to membership interests or shareholder interests. This ordinance allows for a transfer of assets and ownership interests. And there's an application process that any person wanting to seek to change their location would have to go through with the clerk's office and the city. Same with the transfer of ownership or assets. There's a requirement that if there's any material change in the information that's required under the ordinance, the applicant or the licensee has to report that information to the city within 24 hours. If it's a non-material change, they have 10 business days to make that report to the city. There's also provisions in there for denial, renewal, suspension, or revocation of the business permits. We've continued the Marijuana Business Commission as a vehicle for handling administrative appeals of denials, or non-renewals, or suspensions, or revocations, with the same kind of appeal process that you currently have. So there's a coordination between the medical marijuana appeal process and the recreational marijuana appeal process. And then there's a penalty provision with a series of fines, depending on whether it's the first violation, second violation, or third violation. But that's about it in a long nutshell. So there's a lot of room there for the council members to mull over, you know, what your policy decisions will be with respect to a lot of these different provisions in the ordinance.
Thank you for that initial special presentation. So what we should anticipate is that this draft will become the first reading next week. Should we anticipate adequate and preemptive providing of an ordinance to amend ordinance 2360 to have a first reading for that as well? We've already spoken about the zoning, sort of tandem zoning ordinance changes that would need to be made. But legally speaking, do all three ordinances or ordinance amendments have to be enacted for this airplane to fly?
Ultimately, they will be. You're going to need some coordination between zoning and your regulatory license. Whether or not they have to be enacted the same day, I guess it doesn't have to be done in the same session because you've got different timeframes on zoning because of the requirement to go before the planning commission. But I think Mr. Kalani has a preliminary draft of the zoning ordinance. It's just a question of what the timing is for getting it in front of the planning commission.
All right. So bearing in mind that council members have not had adequate time to digest and prepare a full set of questions, it's still in order for a special presentation. If there's any preliminary or clarifying questions or feedback, Councilman Goodman had a hand, and then Councilman Nicholson.
What I want to say is I am perfectly fine with us asking questions, but I do want us to minimize as much of that as possible until we've actually had a chance to digest this. This is just a request from myself to my colleagues.
Councilman Nicholson.
I have some concerns right away. One is I've seen ordinances that reference other plans and programs that don't currently exist. I want to understand better, when we're referencing the social equity program of the department or the city, does that currently exist?
Well, the department under the ordinance is defined as the cannabis regulatory agency, and they have a social equity program, so...
Meaning the state's?
The state, correct. So the Licensing and Regulation Division has a cannabis regulatory agency, and they have a social equity program. So social equity applicants to any city generally apply to get social equity qualified through the state, and they have to meet those state criterias and submit an application and be approved. So as part of their application, they would have to document that they've been approved by the state. The city has the discretion to create its own social equity program, which this ordinance creates it in a general way. But you obviously have discretion to look at it and add more specifics, depending on what your policy is.
Thank you for the clarity. The other concern that I have regarding, one, you know, I think we've all, in different ways, made it clear that we're nervous and uncomfortable by the number of licenses available. This essentially expands that. So I'm concerned, is the reason that the social equity retailers expanding on top of that is because our current pool of 20 medical providers would not qualify? Or is this our way of being able to add in the social equity element to expand the number of licenses available?
It's an attempt to add in a social equity component to give social equity applicants an opportunity to get a license.
So effectively, we would not be able to have a social equity program based on what's already gone on if we don't expand the number of licenses available?
Well, you still have discretion to decide how many, so you can reduce it, or increase it, or keep it the same. We did look at creating more of a point system within the non-social equity application process scoring criteria that added points if you had a certain social equity component. And then, after a further discussion, separated the two, similar to what Ypsilanti did. Detroit's the most aggressive version, where they've got 50 non-social equity applications slots open, and then 50 social equity slots open for retail locations. Ypsilanti, I think, has seven non-social equity and three social equity.
Is this the appropriate time or not with an ordinance like this to tackle the issue of caregiving? The reason I'm asking is in my district, we have some individuals that are doing that under the auspices of caregiving, but are probably not following what we would like. So we would need to put a local ordinance to... But is this the right or wrong time to include anything regarding?
I would suggest you have that as a separate ordinance. That's more of an enforcement issue.
Thank you.
Councilman Parker, and then Mayor Grimal.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that under the issue of social equity, they can place them anywhere in the city, they don't have to follow the overlay?
Well, they have to be in an overlay district, but it doesn't have to be limited to one overlay district. So we've kept the overlay districts the same, so a social equity retail applicant could apply in any one of those pre-existing overlay districts, which are basically mimicked in the draft recreational zoning ordinance.
Okay. And my next question, you talked about Pontiac being disproportionately impacted by... What is, can you explain that to me a little bit better? What disproportionately impacted means?
So the social equity program with the state of Michigan has identified a list of communities that are disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs in terms of the number of convictions and the income levels, et cetera. And Pontiac is on that list. But the prior Detroit lawsuit, where their first recreational ordinance was struck down, was struck down basically because they were focusing too much on Detroit residents. And so Detroit, when they did their second ordinance, opened it up to any applicant who's from an economically disadvantaged community to avoid a court striking it down. So this particular ordinance kind of follows that because there's ongoing cases right now still litigating that issue. One in federal court, and there's one at the Court of Appeals. So one of the objectives of the city administration is to try to design an ordinance to minimize litigation, although we recognize disaffected applicants who don't get the proper scores may initiate litigation. But we're trying to minimize the possible litigation against the city.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, to try to further amplify some of the answers that have been provided, you know, it's no secret that low-income communities in general, including and especially Black and Hispanic communities, have been disproportionately impacted over the many decades of the war on drugs through higher incarceration rates, longer incarceration periods, and a variety of other impacts, including just the increased violent crime that surrounds making any substance illegal, which itself breeds more violence, as we saw during the prohibition on alcohol in the 1920s as well, for that matter. And in light of that, the state of Michigan has recognized several, well, maybe more than a several, but a number of communities as social equity communities, and defined what a social equity applicant is. It is our desire to try to benefit social equity applicants within our legal ability to do so. So we also, of course, want to minimize the city's exposure to litigation and try to mitigate the likelihood of litigation. There may be some tension between those two objectives, but that's why we wanted to include a social equity component. That doesn't necessarily have to be structured the way that this proposed draft ordinance is structured. The structure of having a number of non-social equity slots that mirrors the number of medical marijuana slots, and then adding some additional social equity slots, which is what this proposed draft ordinance has done, is mirrored after the approach that Ypsilanti took. But that's not the only plausible way to do that. We could have just a fixed number of slots, and could give social equity applicants some additional points within that general one category of slots. So that would be an alternative approach. And I don't know the legal balancing of that approach versus the other approach. The attorneys can speak better to that than I can. But that's really the crux of that approach.
Any further discussion on this initial special presentation? I have a final clarifying question. The term excess grower is defined here as referencing having five Class C growing operations. I would assume, does that mean in the state?
Well, it could be in Pontiac, because you're allowing stacking. So a Class C grow license in the recreational statute and in the ordinance is 2,000 plants. So if you have five Class C licenses, that's 10,000 plants. An excess grow license would be another 10,000 plants.
Understood. So that's why there's that sort of different classification? Because it's not just a straight-up grower, it's somebody who has excess growing capacity?
Right. And a 20,000-plant grow would be considered small, medium-size, as opposed to a mega-grow.
But that has statewide implications? It's not just limited to the confines of the city of Pontiac? Or should we consider that related to the confines of the city of Pontiac?
The way the ordinance is drafted, it's for Pontiac.
Understood, okay. Councilman James, and then Mayor Grimal.
The, what's the difference between the regular retailer and these mini or micro businesses? And is the amount for application the same for the micro applicants and the regular retailer applicants?
In this draft, it is the same, but you have discretion to decide if you want to charge a different fee for a microprocessor as opposed to a full-blown retailer establishment. But a retailer establishment can purchase as much marijuana as they can sell from a processor or grower. Whereas a micro-business, they can grow up to 300 plants. Generally, if they're a successful micro-business, they're going to run out of product from the 300 plants during the course of a year. So that particular license gives them the option of acquiring additional marijuana product from a processor and grower. Marijuana product referring to flour, pre-rolls, edibles, oils, et cetera. So it's, there was a lot of study by the state about what to do with a micro-processing license. The original one was limited to 150 plants, and nobody was applying for them because economically, it didn't seem feasible. If you were in a good location, you would run out of product fairly quickly. And then you wouldn't have anything to sell for nine months out of the year. So the Class A micro-business was something the state thought would be a more feasible model. It does tend to merge more into, it almost looks like a retailer establishment, except you can grow in your facility.
Follow-up, Councilman James.
So they're really, the micro, there's no limit to how much product they can sell?
Correct. They can sell what they generate from the 300 plants, but when they, if they run out of product, they can purchase product from...
And there's no limit to what they can purchase?
Right, correct.
Mayor Grimal.
Well, it dawned on me that I don't know that I followed up on Councilman Parker's question. He had asked about the way this draft ordinance is constructed, about where the social equity applicants could locate. And just to kind of further clarify and amplify the attorney's answer, the medical ordinance has three actual zones, each of which could have five medical licensees, plus a at-large zone throughout the entire city. And we mirror that in terms of the non-social equity applicants for the recreational ordinance. But when it... But when it came to the social equity applicants, what... How this is drafted is those four could be anywhere in those four areas, the three zones or the at-large area. Now, it doesn't have to be that way. Obviously, city council could say that they want to limit those four social equity applicants to the three zones and not allow them to be in any other part of the city. And certainly, that's something I'm open to, whatever city council prefers in that regard.
Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor. I know a lot of my constituents' concerns are, you know, District 2 does not fall in any of those corridors, yet we still have that concern that there will be, you know, retail locations in the non-overlay. So I would, you know, I think the will of, you know, in the past, and a lot of people have come before us and used the term loophole, and we want to close as many of those, so I... That would be an interest of mine.
Any final questions or initial feedback when it comes to this special presentation? Hearing none, we move now to... Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We move now to recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials in the community that we should recognize, even if she doesn't want to speak tonight? Give a shout-out to Pontiac Charter Revision Commission Chair, the Honorable Tamika Ramsey. All right, with that, we are at Agenda Address. President Pro Tem William A. Carrington, are there any requests to speak on items on the agenda today?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Dr. Deirdre Waterman, Items 1, 2, and 3.
Yes, and last week I came and spoke to opening up the process for medical marijuana.
Dr. Waterman, if you could wait just momentarily, I want your time to be respected, and there's a lot of people jetting all of a sudden.
And I struck a nerve from some of the comments, but...
If you could just hold on one of a second.
Wait.
Wait.
I shall wait.
Thank you. I'll provide five more seconds for people walking out to do it extremely quickly. Four, three, two, one. Dr. Deirdre Waterman, your Agenda Address begins now.
Yes, and last week, although I seemed to have struck a nerve as I came and talked about opening up the process for consideration of recreational marijuana in the city of Pontiac, it seems like that did have a result because now we see that you got it on the agenda this week, rushed it here, so much so, it is hot off the press. But I think that's important, and I do appreciate the fact that the council members want to take time to consider this thoroughly. And the purpose is that you avoid the kind of seeds of discontent that are out there, including such people as our former councilperson, Patrice Waterman, who is a member of the transition team for Mayor Grimal, who comes and talks about secret deals. So this is why we want to open up the process, and that's what you're doing right here. And I do appreciate the conversation that's going on. This is a good chance for council members to change the loopholes, that was the name we used, as well as the mistakes that were made in having medical marijuana drafted, not by people who, like you, you know, are considering the best interests of the city. And so it gives you a chance to correct some of those things, as they've talked about, and I hear some of that is here from the attorneys who spoke. But I did also want to welcome the new planning and community development people who have come. I do know Deborah Younger from previous associations, and Rachel Lawfrin, who is our new department head, was... I brought her to the city. She was my economic development director earlier on. She left after about a year to be... To go closer home to Independence Township. But I did want to give a salvo to the planning division people who left. Berengus Dofson and Donovan Smith, they did a great job, and we don't want to give them their due as they leave the city. But they're being replaced by very capable people, and we do appreciate the service that they perform for the city.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. This is Iola Miller. Mr. Chuck Johnson.
She's right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, council members and Mayor Grimal. I thought that the medical marijuana provision was granted through a vote by the citizens of Pontiac, and now the recreational use is just going to the council. I don't understand that. Is it going to be a vote taken to ask the community whether they want this new licensing program for recreational marijuana, or is it just the city council is going to decide on that? And that's all I had to say about the agenda item. I did want to talk briefly about what happened this past year, the downtown street art fair, the New Clinton River Trail, the renovations there, the cemetery walk, the youth recreation program. All those things added so much to the city of Pontiac, and I just wanted to congratulate the council for being a part of that, and I enjoyed every one of those activities. I'm looking forward to next year to bigger and better things and more community participation, and that's going to require that a lot more people know about those activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chuck Johnson, you pass. President McGinnis, that concludes Agenda Address.
All right, very good. We move now to the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. Is there a motion? Support. It's been moved by Councilman Parker. It has been seconded by Councilman Nicholson, so that motion is now before us. Adoption of this resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. As those frequent city council watchers know, our rules, we proceed where we, as a city council, vote to say, hey, city clerk, this is a budget amendment that's going to be considered, gives him time to put it in a publication of circulation, and then in two weeks' time, it'll come before us so that the community, taxpayers, and concerned council watchers can know about it, speak about it. But so that's what this very initial step is for the posting. It'll be back in two weeks. This involves multiple general fund accounts dealing with motor fuel, oils and lubricants, asset management, plan review, services, maintenance vehicles, motors, fuel, oils, and lubricants, and other departments, engineering services, insurance property coverage, and the list goes on. A great deal of it does fall under Department of Public Works, although there is some human resources implications as well. So for the sake of being efficient with taxpayers' resources, we're trying to capture many of these smaller moving budgetary tweaks in one fell swoop. So with that, I want to give the floor to the mayor and administration for context on what these budget amendments would do.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll defer to Deputy Mayor Calphony Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President, as you aptly noted, this is one large budget amendment. The idea here is that we wanted to try to move away from doing constant minor amendments and take time to really review and say, you know, we've been doing... We've been activating the budget for three months, six months, you know, however long. Let's go back, let's look at where we were, and let's see where... What items need to be changed to deal with past errors, and what items need to be changed to deal with the fact that the landscape has just changed because the budget is a plan, and you have to update the plan as the reality on the ground changes. And so these items here all relate specifically to the Department of Public Works. There are some, as you said, there are some human resources items that are part of this, but this is specific to that department in general. And the idea is twofold. There are two things that we're dealing with. The first is we're dealing with some items that were awry in the budget from its passing. So as we were putting together the budget, we missed a couple of items in negotiation of where they would actually fall, and so that's the motor fuels and oil... Motor fuel, oils, and lubricants that you referred to. So the former engineer was debating whether or not to leave those items where they were or to move them to a different line item. And in that debate, they got left out of the budget completely. So they are... This amendment is actually putting them back in the budget so that we will actually have the legal authority to buy fuel so that we can run trucks in the winter to clear the snow and ice. Additionally, we had planned on bringing engineering staff in-house. As you know, we have, not just the city of Pontiac, but many organizations have found it difficult in general to find workers, but very, very specifically, engineering work is extremely difficult to find. And so we are rebalancing funds from the salaries, wages, FICA, and all of that, and moving those funds to contracted services so that we can continue to move forward with engineering services and getting items taken care of. I would say that that is the... That's the real crux of the big changes. There's also one other item in here, which is asset management. This is actually broken across three different funds. It is in the general fund, and then it is also in the major streets fund and the local streets fund. And this is to pay not only for software that will actually allow us to better handle complaints and issues of, hey, the streetlight is down, or some... There's a pothole, different things. It will also... So that's why it's across the major streets and the local streets fund. But it will also allow us to purchase the software or continue to purchase the licensing for the software, but also to employ individuals to actually put correct data into the system, you know, garbage in, garbage out. So we actually need to make sure that all of that data is correct and updated on a timely basis. One of the issues that we had earlier this year that is not related to any of this is that we were trying to create an accurate map of all of the properties that the city owned. And the city's data was corrupted. The data at Oakland County was corrupted, and we had to rebuild that data. And so this asset management... These asset management funds will help us make sure that all of our data in our system is correct. And we do have the DPW Director and our senior financial accountant here, if you have any specific questions on rationale or on what the remaining fund balances would be.
All right, Councilman Nicholson.
I have a request if... When we're... Now that we're going to put them together, would it be possible, I think I have an interest in adding a standing agenda item on the finance subcommittees, rolling whatever we have that we're aware of each month, it would be nice for us to be able to break those out and have a discussion, just because I know this is... It's a lot to consider all at one time, so I think we can be more deliberative there, and also, it's a public forum, so I think that would be good. Thanks.
Well put. Councilman Parker.
Looking at this, and certainly we know that there were some omissions there, so when we look at all...
Microphone?
Sorry.
Okay, certainly, thank you, Brother President. As we know that there were some omissions made, when we look at the overall, how much more does this add to the budget?
I believe the total addition to the budget is just under or just over $500,000. Sakar, is that in here?
Hi. I'm John. Good evening, council and the mayor. In general fund, we are asking for additional $161,000. In the major street fund, we are requesting for $130,500. On local street fund, we are requesting additional $123,000. And the capital improvement fund, we are requesting for $265,000.
Okay, so what's the total?
Six hundred thousand. Oh, the total? Okay, I'm sorry.
Six hundred thousand.
Councilman Rutherford shared about six.
Six hundred thousand.
About seven, actually.
Six to seven, my bad.
But I should say that... So it was 160, 130, 143, and 265. And the 265 is actually rolling over funds that should have been spent in the last fiscal year to this fiscal year. So those funds are to pave the parking lot here and to also do some work at the cemetery, at Ottawa Park Cemetery.
Okay. And so it's worth noting that if you want to structure that in a way that gives those summaries so we could see the full, you know, the full impact when it comes in two weeks so the community and the council has that... Those figures refreshed. Mayor Grimal?
Well, I think it's also important to note, and Deputy Mayor Stevens touched on this, but quite a significant portion of this additional funding is for engineering services. We do anticipate that we'll see a reduction in the expenditures that had been budgeted for salaries for in-house engineering people. And I don't think the figure that was shared was a net cost after the reduction of those salaries, or was it?
It is.
It is a net cost.
So this is the net cost. So again, we... Sakar provided the information to you, broken down by the different funds. So if you think about it, the general fund, we're asking the general fund to take $160,000 out of fund balance. The street funds, $130,000 out of one and $143,000 out of the other. And then the capital improvement fund is the largest fund that we're asking for, that's $265,000. But again, that $265,000 was budgeted in the previous fiscal year. It was not expended in the previous fiscal year, was supposed to be rolled over to this year, and that did not happen. And so now we're asking to actually do that so that we can make the parking lot repairs, which we have been speaking about, you know, most of this year, and then also to make repairs at Ottawa Park, which we, again, have been speaking about.
Any further discussion on the motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to post the notice? Councilman James?
I have a question about the engineering services. Are those services going to be in-house? Are these contractual services going to be in-house, or are we going to be using outside people?
Outside people.
Outside firms?
Outside funds.
Is it possible to contract people for in-house? In-house work, in other words, to have some engineers who are working from City Hall?
So currently, that's how Jack Cady is working currently. He is contracted to be here full-time from an outside source. And we have spoke with the engineering firms that we have on staff, and none of them currently have a engineer that would qualify as a city engineer that, you know, they spread their time throughout other communities and other places that they work for. So none of the consultants we currently have on staff have the ability to sit somebody here full-time for that position. If we did do that, it would be a great increase in this budget amendment to have somebody here full-time. Currently, what we're asking for is sending that work to them, having it done within their office, and then it coming back to us. If we ask for somebody to sit here as a full-time employee for a city engineer position, that could get into close to $300,000 for the year, just a, you know, a ballpark number of what their hourly rate is times 40 hours for the entire year.
Councilman Rutherford.
So let me make sure I got this right. We don't have a city engineer, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we outsource all of the projects that's happening in the city because we don't have a city engineer to... Because my issue is, it's just like when we had Wade Trim, and we said we were going to bring it in-house, and we did, and now we don't have somebody to literally designate what is happening with businesses, with building, with structure. I don't understand it, but yet we want to, like, make it make sense to me, because it doesn't make sense to me.
So whether we have a city engineer here or we don't have a city engineer here, all of our work has been contracted out for several years now, dating pre-my time. So the city engineer would review things that was being sent to the consultant engineers, and currently, myself, Jack Cady, and we're using the previous engineer, John Ballant, he looks at some of these items for us too as well that are being put out to the consultants. We would prefer to hire a full-time engineer, city engineer here, but we're not receiving applicants, and as Deputy Mayor had said, it's a real tight market for engineers. applicants, and, and as Deputy Mayor had said, it, it's a real tight market for engineers, and we're, we would prefer to have somebody in-house for that position, but it's just not able to happen right now.
So because, yeah. So because we don't have a civil, a city engineer, how many current projects are either being postponed or on hold? Because John Ballant, that's the guy who used to work here, he doesn't want to come back here to work. I'm, I'm just, I'm very concerned about upcoming projects, streets, if you will, everything that has to do with the structure of a city. So I'm, I'm, I'm beating this, this message clear, because we said we were going to do one thing, we did it, and now we're, we're moving backwards in, in having key people in key positions, and the incompetence that I, I don't understand it.
So we're doing our best to keep the, the capital improvement program that was set in place by the former engineer, we're doing our best to keep that moving and adding to that for the future years. Of course, because there's not a city engineer, there is a little lag in time, but nothing that is, we haven't had a city engineer in seven months. We're not seven months behind in work.
Councilman Nicholson.
I, I want to point out that the city engineer position is posted, and we are actively recruiting for that role. So it's not for a lack of trying. I know it's been incredibly difficult to find that sort of talent right now. And I know we've even gone beyond just posting it and, you know, and doing the normal run of, of recruitment, but we're also working with firms to try to find that talent at an affordable price. And we've, I know we've adjusted that expectation on what we believe affordable is time and time again, and it is just really a very difficult job market, especially in that higher caliber of, of talent. I mean, we, you know, we lost our, our last city engineer in a bidding war with, with MDOT. So, you know, it's, it's, I, I, I understand completely, and I'm, I'm glad that we have some resources to be able to keep the wheels moving. It's, but it is, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not cheap.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
So to, to answer the, the questions a little bit more in-depth on, you know, do we have a city engineer, do we not have a city engineer, can we bring engineering in-house? What we have done is we, and we have been doing this for several years now, we contract with a multitude of engineering firms, because even those firms are having difficulty finding engineers. So having a multitude of firms on record allows us to keep our projects going forward, because any one firm may not have availability to do the work at, at any time, so it allows us the flexibility as if we had a larger actual engineering staff. But we, we do have a couple of firms, I will say, that we work with a little bit more in-depth. So for example, for example, the firm that John Ballant is with, John essentially acts as the city's engineer. So when we have things that have to be signed by an actual certified public engineer, we send it to his firm for him to review. We do have Jack Cady, who sits here on a continual basis, so that we do actually have someone in-house, like, Monday through Friday, eight to five, that if we need an eye on it right now, we don't have to worry about, you know, which firm are we going to send it to, we have something. It is the intent, as Councilman Nicholson said, for us to actually bring all of this in-house. We did our regular recruitment. We have now since also enlisted the, the aid of recruiting agencies, which is more expensive, but again, it is just what needs to be done. Because as I was speaking with the, some of the firms that we work with, and I'm telling you that they're having trouble finding engineers, I don't mean they're having trouble finding engineers with enough experience, because you have to have been a public engineer for a number of years, meaning that you've worked for a public entity for a number of years before you can sit for and get your PE license, and we have to have a licensed PE engineer on staff to be our city engineer. They can't, they are actually in bidding wars with civil engineers directly out of college. So that this is not just a situation of the city is being penny-wise and pound-foolish or cheap, it is really a situation of we have to find individuals who actually want to be in this exact location. The, the comment that we lost our engineer to a bidding war with MDOT is actually true, but part of the reason we lost him to a bidding war with MDOT was not just the bidding war of salary, it was the location. Whereas his commute to this particular location versus his commute to his MDOT location, when you factor that work-life balance in, it just made more sense for him to take that other position. So we are doing everything that we can to actually change the culture, to change the, the atmosphere and the desirability of the city of Pontiac and as a place to work, which is, you know, we've talked about the, the, the HR committees and the different things that we're doing to really just make this a place of choice for employment.
Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, all of that is accurate, but I would add just a couple of dynamics to it, which is, we're also competing in some instances with entities that allow folks, and this is true of a lot of engineers, to work from home as well. And it's important from our perspective that our city engineer be here in the office, because we have a lot of people who walk in looking for assistance. That includes, at times, contractors, but it also includes a lot of residents. So we, we also want to be careful, yes, we can pay some positions more than others, and that's really true even at the director level, but we don't want some positions to get too far out of whack from other positions. We, and we certainly don't want to allow some people to work from home, but not other people to work from home, because it's important for employee morale that there be an equitable arrangement across our personnel and our workforce. And so those are some of the other challenges, which is, we don't want to be preferential in the work-life conditions for some employees and not for other employees. So we've got to balance all of that, because if we go way out of our way to hire somebody for one position by paying way more than we pay other director-level positions, if we go out of our way to get somebody in a position by allowing them to work from home and not other city employees to work from home, we're going to have broader morale problems here at City Hall, and we may solve one problem, but create much bigger problems with other employees here.
Councilman Goodman.
So, because I didn't hear a good portion of that, I'm making some inferences. So one thing I would do want to say to what you were saying, Mayor, is that while we may be using...
They would like you to speak up.
So while I do hear points, I did not hear a good chunk of that, but to make some inference based off the conversation that we're having, I, I think, to your point, we do create problems if we're attempting to solve a singular issue by making changes for a singular position. But that may also go to say something about the broader situation that we're in, and the broader job market that we're in. And if we're going to want to meet the needs of the city, we may, as a employer, have to make some changes for us to be able to do our job and to make sure that the city is being run properly and efficiently, whatever that may look like for the people who are qualified to do so. Because recognize that while we are an employer, and we have the desire to want to essentially babysit our employees, whether we like to admit it or not, we want to have that control, to know that things are getting done. But we also, that's me speaking about physically having them here, but we have to have a, a, again, more broad conversation about how it is we are going to accommodate the job market, to make sure that the job market accommodates running the city.
Pro Tem Carrington for a first time, followed by Mayor Grimal and Councilman Parker.
I think I just want to follow the mayor's lead concerning fairness of staff and their responsibilities. I definitely would hate to see the city in a position of allowing some staff to work at home and others of not being able to work at home. I think we have to be fair across the table. Me personally, I don't think staff work good from home, and, and I'm a manager at Wayne State University, just to be truthful. It's imperative that we have somebody on-site to make sure they handle the business of the city of Pontiac. But maybe we may think about salary increases or something when it comes to engineer, engineer pay, or something, something in that realm.
Mayor Grimal, and then Councilman Parker.
Yeah, and I don't want to belabor the point, I, I just, the, and I know Councilman Goodman was outside the room, I think, when I made this point, but the, the interest we have in having folks here in the building, including the city engineer, isn't about quote-unquote babysitting them, it's, it's about making sure that they're available for customer service to serve the needs of residents. And we have a lot of residents walk into the building, we have a lot of residents who want to meet in person with folks, and so it, it becomes a little more challenging to meet some of those needs and that expectation of in-person customer service when people aren't physically present in the building. That's the bigger concern.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. I just have really one question, and certainly we know that our human resources department, Ms. Benitez, is doing an outstanding job of trying to get positions filled, but have we also invested in some headhunters? I know you said you've asked companies within the region, but have we invested in headhunters to also look for some of the vacant positions?
Yes.
I'm assuming we have.
Yes, we have. Okay.
Councilman Goodman.
So Mayor, to that point, while I don't, I'm not going to disagree with you on that point, I, I think there is a important thing to be said of, it's really hard to do customer service for a position if the position is not filled. So to, to have that discussion, it would be great to have a city engineer here to be able to talk to residents, but we currently don't have one. And I, I think there is a lot of importance on making sure that we have the position filled, be it, there are obviously very other, many important things about making sure that when we fill a position, that we have someone who is, that we're getting our money's worth out of, that they're doing their job, but there is an importance on making sure that we have them here to be able to do the job that we need them to do.
Any further discussion? Mayor, for a third...
Yeah, and again, I, I don't want to get into too lengthy of a back and forth. Agreed. You know, if we were just talking about one position in isolation, better to have it filled remotely than not at all. But we're not. We're talking about a whole slew of personnel here at City Hall, all of whom work in person. And if we make an exception for one, everybody's going to want to be able to work from home, and that's where the problem comes in. We're able to have the vast majority of our workforce here in person, which is important for customer service. And again, I don't know how we allow somebody to work from home and then tell everybody else they can't.
Councilman Goodman, for a third time.
Just to say, my main thing is, as long as we are doing what we can as a city to essentially make up the difference, I, I want us to no longer have vacant positions that are massively important. So whether it be allowing people to work from home, or whatever else it is that we need to do, at this point, it is really important for us to do what we have to do to begin to fill those roles in multiple different capacities. So whether it's wages, benefits, working from home, we have to do something, because at this point, it is becoming a, a longer over, over-serve detriment than anything else.
All right. Do we authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment? Speakers list having been exhausted, roll call Clerk Doyle on adoption of the resolution authorizing you to publish the proposed budget amendment for this budget here.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the subcontract between Oakland University and the city of Pontiac for the purpose of park site planning as a result of a sub-recipient award through Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund?
Moved by Carrington. Support.
It's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. The motion is now before us. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I want to invite our grants director to the podium, Alex Born-Gesser, to talk about the specific details and, and why this rather complicated contract and subcontract arrangement is necessary in this situation.
Thank you. So, yes, my apologies for the complicated language around the resolution, but in the funding world, sometimes this is how it goes. So the city partnered with Dr. Jennifer Lucarelli in her capacity with Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership to draft an application for a grant award to the Michigan Health Endowment Fund. This award was successful, and it was awarded to PCIP as the lead applicant, because it was open for nonprofits only, and they did secure the award. The reason why you see Oakland University on this resolution and as the, the principal on the subcontract is because PCIP does not have their own bank accounts, and Oakland University is in fact their fiduciary. So to make it simple, the funds were awarded from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund to PCIP. Oakland University is PCIP's fiduciary, and we are a sub-grante of this award, so we will receive resources from Oakland University, meaning we need to engage in a subcontract, as they call it, instead of a sub-award, which is sometimes the language we use, from Oakland University. So that's what you have before you. It is essentially a, a, a sub-grant from Michigan Health Endowment Fund, and totaling $150,000 for park site planning for up to five Pontiac parks.
Fantastic. Discussion, Pro Tem Carrington.
And I know we mentioned earlier concerning this grant, and this is for what we consider the community, community parks, right, neighborhood parks?
This is actually a new opportunity. So the one we spoke about a couple of weeks ago, I'm getting confused because of the holiday, but that was the Spark Grant application, and that's due about a week from now. That's for a separate amount, that's an award ceiling of $1 million. This is actually an application we submitted many months ago, and this is $150,000, and this is just for the planning phase. So what this allows us to do is to go in, leverage the resources that we plan to get later on, utilizing this as a note in the application, as a matching award, to go through the park site planning process, go through the charrette process, and develop a park site plan, and then utilize the other resources to carry that plan farther down, in a similar fashion that we're doing with Galloway Lake Park. So Friends of the Pontiac Parks Association received planning funds, will utilize the park site plan and the concept to apply for the Spark Grant and actually execute the project and deliver the project with those resources. So we're leveraging one opportunity for another and really expanding our funds.
All right. Thank you. No further questions.
Further discussion? Councilman James.
And what was the number of parks that we said we could possibly do plans for with this grant?
It's up to five, and the reason why the language is a little ambiguous is because the cost of services is constantly changing right now, as we all know. So the hope is five, and we used the application and the contract for Galloway Lake as an example, and, and we're hoping that five parks will receive park site planning with these awards, or this, these funds.
Any further discussion? Well, a very welcome development. I know that the mayor wrote a letter of support, we wrote a letter of support from the city council as well, to try and show a united front, and thank you very much to the grants and philanthropy department for your, the work that you did, the work that Dr. Lucarelli and the Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership did that, that netted these funds. The Michigan Health Endowment Fund is a very competitive funding source, and so it's a, a, a welcome outcome, and with this action, we can take the next step of seeing that positive impact. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the subcontract between Oakland University, also known as the Harvard of the Midwest, and the city of Pontiac for the purpose of park site planning as a result of a sub-recipient award through Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to schedule a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant Program year 2023?
So moved.
It has been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. The motion is now before us. Mayor Administration, what do we got?
Thank you, President McGinnis. I will allow Ms. Born-Gesser to get into some of the details, but the short story here is that federal law requires that the Community Development Block Grant appropriation or decision or allocation by the municipality involve an opportunity, a formal opportunity for the public to be heard through a formal public hearing. And we have had two public hearings or listening sessions, but we think it's important... And we have had two public hearings or listening sessions, but we think it's important to specifically designate a time where, where counsel will be present so that the public can be heard in addition to the two public hearings or listening sessions that we've already held. Although the county administers the CDBG fund program on behalf of the city, something that we're hoping to change in the coming months and we're optimistic that we will be able to change in the coming months, thanks to the establishment of our grants department, despite the county administering the funds, they do take direction from us, especially city council, about how to spend those dollars. And without any further delay, I do want to invite Director Born-Gesser to the podium to amplify.
Yes, ma'am. And then Clerk Doyle, after that, I'll have you read the brief language of the, the resolution if you want to.
It's as simple as that. So as part of the programming in partnership with the county, we are required by HUD to host a public hearing. As the mayor noted, we have had town halls and public listening sessions, but this will be a formal public hearing to hear comment from residents and, and the community. Following that, we'll have the block grant programming on the council agenda for the sixth, for, as a discussion item. On the 13th is when the public hearing would be held and it will be presented as a formal resolution on the council agenda for the 13th as well. And that's our schedule. We're hoping to have this all wrapped up and submitted before the 23rd, which is the deadline.
And clarification question, do we already know the specific subset of funds? What's the dollar amount we're, we're talking about in terms of programming for 2023? Or is it amorphous and vague and federal government-y?
It is, it is just that. So we are told to program based off of the prior year, so this year's award, that's roughly $810,000 and some change. But we will not know that final amount until later next year, unfortunately. So.
So again, this will be with this vote, the community's opportunity to come to a public hearing, weigh in, share and help shape what they would like to see those community development block grant funds put to use and provide feedback as well to what the administration is proposing to council for consideration. Any further discussion? Councilman Parker.
First of all, thank you because I came to a couple and listened to one in my office and the information was very informative, although the attendance at both was, from what I would think was very low considering what we were discussing. So I thank you for at least trying to get as much involvement of the community as possible so that we can get this moving forward. So thank you for your efforts. You and I think Ms. Rachel, yeah, they was there.
Yeah, thank you for attending. We did also conduct a digital survey and we had around 125 respondents. So as far as digital surveys go, that's pretty successful. So we did receive all of that feedback and we read every single one and it was very informative for not only block grant, but other granting activities.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, and just to, to add to that, you know, we have really tried to make this a priority as an administration, having a lot of town halls, having a lot of listening sessions and really giving the public an opportunity to be heard. And so while certainly in the past, the city has had a formal public hearing for CDBG dollars as required under federal law, this is the first year that we've done these two additional town halls and listening sessions. It's the first time that the city has done an online survey. So it's all part of our effort in partnership with city council to really increase and ramp up the opportunities for public engagement and public input.
All right. With that, I hear no further discussion. The intention is for that public hearing not to be an additional meeting or hearing to attend, but that would be baked into our regular city council meetings. So if you came to that evening city council meeting, we'd try and do it early on so you could have a dedicated and anticipated opportunity to participate in that public hearing. Clerk Doyle, if you could, please read the language of this resolution before us.
Resolution to, resolution to authorize the city of Pontiac clerk to schedule a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant Program year 2023, excuse me, whereas the city of Pontiac is a sub recipient of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG funds for program year 2023, and whereas the city of Pontiac is required to submit an application for the programming of afforded mention funds to Oakland County by December 23rd, 2022, and whereas the city of Pontiac is required to host a public hearing to allow for feedback from Pontiac residents regarding the programming of 2023 CDBG funds, and whereas the city of Pontiac wishes to schedule the CDBG program year 2023 public hearing on December 13th, 2022, now therefore be resolved that the Pontiac City Council authorizes the city of Pontiac clerk to schedule a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2023 on December 13th, 2022 and to issue a formal, formal notice of public hearing.
All right. So that's the question before city council now. And I also want to thank the city clerk for helping shape that product in terms of making sure that we are adhering to the requirements in these public hearing steps. Roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the updated Title VI nondiscrimination plan?
Move by Carrington.
Supported by Rutherford.
It was moved by President Pro Tem Carrington, supported by multiple, but the loudest voice was Rutherford. Rutherford wins.
Absolutely.
So that's the second. Councilman Rutherford, the motion is now before us. Mayor Administration, please provide context.
Thank you. I'd like to invite our human resources director, Angela Benitez, up to the microphone.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council and residents. I would like to just say one thing before, as I saw, heard you guys talking about recruiting. I am in the process of putting together a recruitment strategy and I've already sent Deputy Mayor a couple pages of that. So we are looking at ways that we can improve the whats and the whys, why people aren't applying, where are people, where's our workforce? And looking at our generation X is our generation, our millennials, all the way now that people don't know, we have something called new and it's Generation Alpha. And looking at all of them and how they're going to play into not just today's workforce, but in the future workforce. So I do want you to know that that is, will be forthcoming and you'll be available for you. Okay. Because the city of Pontiac receives federal highway funds through the state of Michigan, the city is required to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. The first act requires that the city of Pontiac adopted a limited English proficiency proficiency plan, and this is what we did a couple of, I've heard a couple of council meetings ago. Second, the act requires that the city of Pontiac adopts a Title VI nondiscrimination plan that will be forthcoming, and this is what is before you now. The content of both plans is strictly regulated. The plan will be submitted to the state of Michigan for approval. Any changes required by the state to be made to the original draft will be incorporated. Failure to adopt the plans will resort in the inability of the city of Pontiac to receive federal highway funds. So what I'd like to say is that the, this plan is actually the plan that is given by the government. So it's really a, just filling in, in the blanks, they've laid out the plan for us and this is how they would like to see it. And so we've gone through this and made the updates based on, as they relate to the city of Pontiac. At this time, the city council was requested to adopt the following resolution, to adopt the Title VI nondiscrimination plan, whereas in accordance with the Title VI nondiscrimination laws in regard to providing appropriate access to services and activities provided by federal agencies and recipients of federal assistance, the Title VI nondiscrimination plan was drafted to define how the city of Pontiac will proactively work to ensure that no individual faces discrimination and how, and the steps for individuals to aggrieve such discrimination if it exists, whereas every individual has the right to be treated fairly and without partiality, and that no individual should be denied an opportunity to participate in federally financially assisted services due to their race, color or national origin. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pontiac City Council approve and adopts the Title VI plan for the city of Pontiac. At this time, the city council is requested to adopt the following resolution, to adopt the Title VI nondiscrimination plan, whereas the city of Pontiac reaffirms its policy to allow all individuals the opportunity to participate in federally funded, federally financially assisted services. Now therefore it be resolved that the Pontiac City Council approves and adopts the Title VI nondiscrimination plan for the city of Pontiac.
All right. Discussion on the motion. Councilman Nicholson, Mayor Grimal.
I always have a problem with Title VI because it's very limited and, and I just want to make sure, because I saw there is a, something that looks more like a policy that would come out of a handbook. Our policy in our employee handbook goes beyond just race, correct?
Yes, this is just specifically for Title VI and it's because we've received the federal highway funds.
I understand that. I just want to make sure that our nondiscrimination policy for the city is not the one that's included here, that this is just referencing a portion of that policy.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, that, that's a really important point that Councilman Nicholson is making and I, I do want to just emphasize by way of thanking Director Benitez and her team for the amazing work they're doing, that when we took office this year, we walked into a situation where really nothing or virtually nothing in the way of personnel policies, human resource policies had been updated in many, many years. And this has been a really key priority for us, which is making sure that we're updating our nondiscrimination policies internally, that we're updating our Title VI nondiscrimination plan, that we're ensuring that we're putting all of those kinds of policies and procedures in place and developing standard operating procedures so that we can have a city hall and a city government that is properly functioning and that ensures that all employees are treated fairly, equitably and legally. And so I really want to thank you, Director Benitez, and your team for the amazing work you've been doing this year under difficult circumstances because you walked into a situation where things had not been properly updated or maintained in this regard for many, many years.
Yes, thank you. And on that note, I'd like to say that we are up to date with our Title VI annual certification. We have to certify annually. There are certain questions that they ask us and one of the things that we have to do is we must provide training to our staff on Title VI, which we do through our new hire orientation. So that's one of the things that all staff get.
Councilman Rutherford.
I, I'm so glad you guys are doing discrimination, but have you updated or seen any updating happen to ethics and moral integrity included in the employee handbook coming along?
Yeah, so I'm still, I'm working, still working on the handbook. I, I thought that when I got the handbook that another, you know, group had, had kind of looked over it and I think they kind of, kind of glanced at it a little bit, but I would like to see that strengthened and some other things added to our code of ethics.
Councilman Rutherford, no follow-up.
No follow-up. And we're also going to include in the, in the workbook, there is no work from home policy for the city of Pontiac, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
In the reporting requirements, have we considered a whistleblower hotline or a compliance reporting hotline? As it stands right now, it sounds like employees are expected to report and respond only to HR.
Yeah, because I've been designated as the Title VI coordinator. Nobody raised their hands.
I think it's something that is benefits, you know, a, a look at, just because when something like that happens, it, it's not only a, a safeguard to the city, but also to you if, if it's being reported to multiple sources. And, and I know that over the years, you know, in, in any city government, that's going to be something that, you know, whistleblowers is a, I think, an important part of anti-discrimination. So, yeah, it's just something I, I'd put out there to, to take a look at.
Yes. So we do have a whistleblower policy that also new hires sign when they are being brought on. But, yeah, I agree that right now it's just listed the HR telephone number and, you know, if we could have just a general number for people to report any type of discrimination, that would be helpful.
Councilman Rutherford.
My last question is this. So you handle whistleblowers like that. What happens if the accusation is found to be inaccurate? Are the people held to a higher standard or accountability for making misleading or downright discriminative reports?
Yeah, so in the whistleblower policy, and it's just, you know, also stated in the whistleblower act, is that if you are found to be making false allegations and, you know, that there is, the law will be, you know, deal with you appropriately if that is exactly what you are doing. So there is that already in the whistleblower act.
Councilman Goodman.
Just for a reminder for myself and the community, can you please restate what Title VI is pertaining to?
So it's pertaining to nondiscrimination against individuals. Specifically, this is for, because of highway funds. So this would be individuals, let's say, the roads, use of transportation, that everyone, regardless of, you know, their abilities, mental or physical, would, would have the, the ability to utilize these services.
And, I'm sorry, I, I don't believe that's, that's correct. Title VI is specifically about race or national origin. Title VII expands that.
I was just speaking towards this policy.
Okay.
Well, so this is the second question I have is, does this have anything to do with internal employee affairs at all?
Um.
This is more like a, a yes or no question so we can move on.
Okay, yeah, no.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution before us? Council, I'm sorry, Pro Tem Carrington.
No problem. Just a quick question. Are you planning on putting an organizational chart into this resolution? Because I don't see it here.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I don't know, President, shouldn't, shouldn't that be included before we actually voted to approve it? I don't know.
What's the, Director Benitez, what's the time deadline on the submission of?
Of the plan, this actual plan.
Is there a date specific that it should have already been or we need to get it in?
Yeah, October, I would say first, yes. That's the same date that the renewal goes in.
And is there anything that would prevent an organizational chart from being able to be generated?
Could have it done tomorrow.
Do you want to postpone for one week?
Well, if it's not of, of, you know, if it's not an urgency, I would rather have everything in front of us and then we can prove it at one shot, you know?
The Pro Tem's referencing that the overall content it has where the organization chart would go, but the organization chart isn't in it. Councilman Rutherford?
Can I make a motion to postpone?
Oh, absolutely.
I make a motion to postpone if everything is put in to place.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Goodman that this resolution, the motion before us, be postponed for one week and come back at the next regular meeting. Any discussion on that motion to postpone? Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of the motion to postpone, the motion for one week. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We'll see it next week. We are now at public comment. President Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests this evening?
Yes, we have several. President McGinnis, Mr. Blair McGowan, is he here?
Yes.
Blair McGowan, 34 State Street. I wanted to give us an update on the case of Desiree Wilson, who was assaulted on August 18th. She's still in jail over 90 days. She still has not gotten any medical attention. She was given a court-appointed lawyer and she was afraid of him, so she didn't talk to the court-appointed lawyer. The Figer firm went in and she wouldn't talk to them. Her children have been unable to talk to her because there's nobody in the jail that will show Desiree how to use the phone system. And on Tuesday, August 23rd, there was a presentation in this chamber by an undersheriff and the captain in charge of the Pontiac substation, who promised an investigation into the whole incident, including the behavior of the two sheriffs. To our knowledge, there's been no report of that investigation. There's been no disciplinary action that we're aware of, no education, no re, no re-education, no examination of procedures. And of course, this is vitally important because all of us and our families and our friends are susceptible to mental illness. It's endemic everywhere. We have put together a small committee that has raised some funds. We've engaged a criminal attorney, a detective, a medical examination team and a personal injury attorney, and they are cutting through the fog that the sheriff has created. And I think this is important for us to remember because of Desiree, she's a citizen. And I think this is important for us to remember, because of Desiree, she's a citizen, and she deserves respect. It's important, because all of us are susceptible to mental illness episodes. It's important, because we have, we, the city of Pontiac, have engaged a company that has employees that are wreaking havoc on our citizens, and we have a contract with them that expires at some point. We have an opportunity to restructure our relationship with policing and public safety. There are models in the United States that are better, that we could adopt. It's going to take a lot of study, and it's a very difficult situation, because it takes a lot of time and money to handle the role of public safety. We will be having a fundraiser, which we will announce soon, to raise additional funds to keep this team going, to get Desiree into a hospital or appropriate care, and to try to make her case help the rest of the citizens of Pontiac, and help the sheriff's office restructure itself, so they're more respectful to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Billy Swazer?
Hi, I'm Billy Swazer, and I'm here just to talk about the CEPR election. It is ongoing, and it will conclude with your ballot being mailed in and being at the post office on this Saturday, December 3rd. So please, if you want to vote, mark your ballot, send it in. Other people have. We will conclude it, and I will be talking to Lyndon Watson, who is one of the people on the election committee, and getting the results for, maybe I can say it next week. Thank you.
Ms. Tamika Ramsey?
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for the success of Pontiac Small Business Saturday. We actually did a whole weekend. Pontiac Goes Big or Goes Home, and so there were events starting on Friday, ending on Sunday. I bumped into Pro Tem Carrington at a couple of these pop-up shopping, and we appreciate that. So we had three days, five pop-ups with over 50 vendors, so that's 50 small businesses. We had articles in the Oakland Press and the Detroit News. The organizers of the pop-ups were Jordan Chambers and Lee Grayer, Mia Grant and Chrishell Griffin, and Irma Hayes and Terry Covington. The city of Pontiac, Pontiac Community Foundation, Pontiac Regional Chamber, Pontiac Mainstream and Main Street, and T. Ramsey and Associates worked very hard over the last month to make that happen, and we are looking to grow it even bigger next year. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to all the businesses. I was able to lighten my pockets and do some Christmas shopping. There will also be at Gallery 46. Irma Hayes will continue to do another pop-up this weekend as well. So if you missed out on any of that, please go. So I just want to say thank you. Also to Ms. Bridges here at the city. She worked with us to get our press release together and then sent it out, and I believe we got all the media hits because of her hard work. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for that. And so going forward, I'm just going to be coming here as a resident, so I just needed to say this right quick. I live on Second Street, last house of a cul-de-sac, the only house at the end of the cul-de-sac. And so cars come and park, and do drugs, and have sex, and the police have started to come, because there were some cars stolen and abandoned on our street. And so I called the mayor's office, and they got right on it. And so now we have police cars driving by every now and then, but most of the time, there are cars parked on my street. And so if we can get some streetlights or something done, I am taking a CCW class, but I'm dangerous, and I don't know if we want that. The other thing is, my husband goes to work really early in the morning, and those streets don't be saunter all the time. We have a lot of people who still work at the plant, and we need to be cautious and careful about them driving so early in the morning. And I know that, you know, the temperature and the salt, but just to keep that on your radar. So no gun for Tamika, streetlights, please, and salt on the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
Blair, I hope the attorney that you've engaged for Desiree Williams realizes this is a human rights violation, barbaric at this age for medication, and I hope he will get an injunction from the judge to get the medical doctor to get the medication she needs, so she's not caged like an animal. But I did want to talk about the agenda item about the Oakland University partnership. I think a number of us went to the Oakland University annual meeting, which is now the seventh annual meeting of this partnership that we've had for the city of Pontiac that started some years ago that is existent, based upon the six principles of the economic development plan of the city. And this contract that you have, that you approved today for their, acts as a fiduciary for park development, is one of the offsprings of that kind of relationship we've had with Oakland University that was non-existent before then. And so many projects have developed out of that partnership. I'm just proud to say that we're continuing that, and that has benefited the city as well as the university, which wants to be more and more, a more cosmopolitan university. One of the other things that is a spin-off of that is that we introduced a little bit, and that there were four people of the core group of Oakland University-Pontiac partnership who helped me form this, is because the city did not have, as I said, a fiduciary to handle some of the things that came, the opportunities that came to the city, as I was mayor. So together, we formed that Spirit of Pontiac Community Foundation. And that's based upon the 10 legacy projects, and I've mentioned some of those sometimes, that we want to make sure that we advocate and push forward, such things as fiscal stability for the city and the surplus that was left, such things as the ARP grant money, such things as the Pontiac Youth Recreation Facility that was open. We want to continue to advance those legacy projects that were founded under the previous administration with the Ninth and Tenth councils. So I just wanted to commend you for continuing that partnership that has been a great benefit to the city of Pontiac. And then, just lastly, as I was mentioning the fact that Vern Gustafson and Donovan Smith of our Planning Division decided to leave the city. And they did quite a bit of good for the city. And so as you were talking last week about hiring a company, consultant company, to train the new people coming in, because Vern and Donovan were negligent, and that was the word of the mayor, in not leaving a plan. They did leave that, and I'll send the link to you. You know, it is, Rachel, it is there. It's also on the municipal and building code. But also, also, I'm seeing a pattern of action. If we're talking about having trouble recruiting people, there's been a pattern in which we kind of blame people and call them negligent after they leave, which is not something that needs to be done.
That does conclude your time. Thank you. Ms. Iola Miller, you actually? Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. I was going to sit the night out, but after listening to some of the concerns that the council and the mayor and the other directors brought forward, you know, I think that the city, or all the way around the country, needs to start looking at retired individuals who would love to come back into the workplace. Engineers, for an example. A lot of engineers that still have their credentials, they may have a little snow on the mountain, but there's a lot of fires still in their furnace. And they're ready to come back into the workplace and try and help with plans and ideas that we can't get from our millennials, because all they want to do is sit home and get high and make babies. So we got to start looking at, and this is around the country, not just here in Pontiac. We got to start looking at how we can capture some of these strong minds and bring them back into the workforce, because I think that's what's going to ultimately happen as time goes by. Deputy Mayor, you recommended that the parking lot out here was going to be paved at some point in time, utilizing some dollars that's coming up. In that scheme of things, I think that you should visit cameras and better lighting in the parking lot out here, because it's very dark out there. We have a lot of ladies that walk in and out by themselves, and, you know, it's, I got all the air out of my tires one night, you know, I couldn't blame anybody because there was no cameras, and the light was very low. Let's see, what else can I talk about? I know that there was a lot of things that was mentioned at the table, and I agree with a lot of things that were talked about, and the concerns that you had regarding how you're going to approach the marijuana issue, getting to know more about whatever it is. But four years is a long time for these individuals to have to wait just to find out. Again, now they're going to have to wait maybe five or six more months just to get, get to where they need to be. And, you know, and I'm not, I'm not one that's trying to create a growth site or whatever, but I think, I think this should be pushed forward a little bit faster, so these people that are standing out there waiting to get their operation moving, I think we should try and help them as a city. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it. If we ain't, throw it out, go forward. Thanks a lot for the time. Again, I was going to sit this one out, but I had to make a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment. President McGinnis?
There may be snow on the mountain, but there's still fire burning in the furnace. I may be here 60 or 50 years from now, and I just want you to know that I will quote you in reference where I heard that from in these hallowed chambers. Thank you, Pro Tem Carrington. We're at City Council Communications. I'll just run through the few items that are between now and next week. On Tuesdays and Wednesdays, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., E. Community Outreach Services has navigators on hand at their offices at 953 West Huron in Waterford. Navigators will help you determine through the RAP program if you have eligibility, and that helps with water bill assistance. So if you know any community members that might have challenges being able to afford their water bills, they have navigators at no cost be able to help residents and those facing challenges. You can call 855-976-9367, extension 207, for more information. Again, 855-976-9367, extension 207. Now through January 4th, Mittens for Detroit is collecting new mittens and glove donations for children, including a pickup site at the Pontiac Community Foundation, 79 Oakland Avenue in Pontiac. Let Us Help is free tutoring, essay writing, computer skills, financial literacy, resume writing, and interview preparation, and that's Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., held at Pontiac Seventh Day Adventist Church at 182 South Sanford Street in Pontiac. Grave blankets at Oak Hill Cemetery and Ottawa Park Cemetery, both owned by us, the taxpayers of Pontiac. Those grave blankets are still available for ordering. You can contact them at 248-623-7705. For more information, again, 248-623-7705. Right now, there is a Pontiac Impact Challenge running. It's happening online today through December 4th, where various Pontiac nonprofits are raising money and having the money raised matched and increased, and that's through the Pontiac Community Foundation. So if you're looking to support a Pontiac nonprofit, this might be a great week to do that, so that way your contribution can be matched or dialed up and have an even greater impact. The annual holiday tree lighting ceremony for the city of Pontiac happening in downtown, outside of our city's district courthouse at the corner of Saginaw and Huron, at the northeast corner, is happening this Friday, December 2nd, in downtown Pontiac. I want to say 6:00 p.m., but I'm...
5:30.
5:30. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. 5:30, and that's December 2nd. And then, also on December 2nd, the We Care Neighborhood Association has their holiday celebration, 6:00 p.m. this Friday, December 2nd. That's at Shiloh Baptist Church, 474 University Drive. That next day, this coming Saturday, December 3rd, there is a winter fun festival happening downtown. I believe it's 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. happening downtown on Saginaw Street, just before the annual Holiday Extravaganza Parade, that is this Saturday morning, along Caesar Chavez, Oakland Avenue and Saginaw Street in downtown Pontiac. The next Pontiac Planning Commission meeting is on Wednesday, December 7th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the city council, in the city council chambers here at Pontiac City Hall. And finally, Ottawa Park Cemetery, owned by us taxpayers out in Clarkston on Dixie Highway. Their tree lighting event that their representatives and staff have spoken about is on December 8th at 6:30 p.m. The Ottawa Park Chapel is at 6180 Dixie Highway in Clarkston. Prayers will be offered, and the names of those laid to rest recently will be read with refreshments to follow. With that, we go to the mayor's communications, Mayor Grimal, and then you can roll into your closing comments.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I want to begin with a really positive announcement. We had amazing attendance here not long ago, about a month ago or so, for our Fall Harvest Festival here at City Hall. We had hundreds and hundreds of Pontiac residents, especially families with kids, come by that day, and it was a very successful event. We are following that up with a similar winter festival this coming January, and that's going to be on January 14th, that's a Saturday, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. right here at City Hall. So we encourage folks to come on out for that. We're getting the word out early this time. It's, I know, about a month and a half out yet, but we want people to start spreading the word for the winter festival, again, Saturday, January 14th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. right here at City Hall. We'll have lots of fun activities and games for families and kids, so please join us. I want to thank our youth recreation manager, Tanisha Taylor, for her hard work organizing both the Fall Harvest Festival and the upcoming Winter Festival. And if I may, City Council President, roll into my closing comments. I do just want to respond and answer some questions that some members of the public have asked during public comment today. It's certainly true that the medical marijuana ordinance was put in place by a vote of the residents. That could be done with a recreational marijuana ordinance as well, but it is certainly not required that it be done that way. In the case of the medical marijuana ordinance, the process was largely set in place by a vote of the people, although a lot of the fine tuning was done by the previous mayor and the previous city council. Certainly, some of the challenges and problems with the process, although not all of them, were a result of it being done through a public vote that was initiated by marijuana business interests without necessarily thinking about what's in the best interest of the community. And we thought, and by we, I mean certainly the executive branch, but I know some of the council members as well, really wanted it to have a more deliberative process here at City Hall through the process and deliberations of elected officials, as opposed to just leaving it up to a vote of the people, or just worst-case scenario, and what we really wanted to avoid was having a vote driven and managed by marijuana business interests. We want to make sure that this is done in the right way and a way that really benefits everybody here in Pontiac, and minimizes and mitigates the downsides that other communities have experienced when they've legalized recreational marijuana. I also want to just take the opportunity to thank Tamika Ramsey. I know I've said this at past meetings, but Tamika has just been an amazing community leader here in Pontiac. She has poured her heart and soul for many years into supporting local small businesses, including this past Saturday for Small Business Saturday. It was a really great event, I understand. I was out of town that weekend, but I did take some time to promote one of our local small businesses and entrepreneurs on social media that day. And I just want to thank Tamika for her amazing efforts on behalf of so many small businesses and residents here in Pontiac. I also want to just acknowledge what Chuck Johnson said as well. It's a really important point. We are very open to hiring retired workers. We welcome those who have retired from other positions to apply for city positions. So please, if you're watching this or listening to this, and you are retired, to this and you are retired, please check out the open positions we have here in the city of Pontiac, because we would love for you to apply. And so please, definitely check out the opportunities here, because we know there are a lot of talented people at all stages of their career, of all ages, and we welcome your application. We welcome anybody and everybody who has the skills and the expertise and the interest in serving the public here in Pontiac. Uh, and I also wanted, uh, just to, to try to address at least some of the misinformation that the previous mayor continues to spread at these meetings, uh, because, uh, certainly nobody, uh, called previous, uh, staff quote-unquote negligent, uh, and the reason for the hiring of the planning consulting firm, uh, is not in any way to train planning staff, as was specifically said by the community development director last week. The purpose of hiring the consulting firm is to help us catch up on an enormous backlog of applications for permits and rezoning, and make sure that we're catching up on that backlog while allowing the new planning manager to think about some of the bigger picture things, including hiring some additional in-house staff here at City Hall, as well as putting in place standard operating procedures, updating, uh, the planning code, updating the zoning map, and making sure that we're addressing some of those bigger picture items that are more policy in nature, uh, and that while he's focused on some of those important matters, that we make sure we're catching up on some of this backlog with the planning consultants. Uh, even more importantly, I wanna just make sure there's no confusion in the public. Uh, the way that the previous mayor spoke, she made it sound as if the Spirit of Pontiac Foundation was somehow, uh, organized by the city of Pontiac, and somehow the previous city council or the previous mayor in her capacity as mayor had created this on behalf of the city. Nothing could be further from the truth. The Spirit of Pontiac Foundation is a creature of the previous mayor in her individual capacity solely, and it's really important that we not, uh, spread confusion about that, because this city council, uh, working collaboratively with Alex Borngester, our grants director, and, and me as mayor, officially designated the Pontiac Community Foundation to be the fiduciary on behalf of the city. And, uh, when we, uh, are raising funds in a way that those funds can't come directly to the city, or need to go to a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity for the benefit of the city, we have designated the Pontiac Community Foundation expressly for that purpose. And so it's really important that we not allow those who wanna spread misinformation or confusion to conflate the official fiduciary of the city, the Pontiac Community Foundation, with a personal foundation that has nothing to do with the city of Pontiac. And lastly, I, I know that the President of City Council, uh, announced the fact that we've got our annual holiday parade this Saturday, but I do just wanna make sure that, that we amplify that and really encourage Pontiac residents to come out and show out this Saturday morning for the annual Holiday Extravaganza Parade. That's going to be occurring this Saturday morning, December 3rd. We look forward to seeing the streets lined here in downtown Pontiac with a lot of Pontiac residents for this really festive occasion. Uh, we've been decorating the streets, uh, this week as well, uh, and so we hope people come with the holiday spirit and really enjoy both the parade this Saturday and the night before the tree lighting at the 50th District Court at the corner of Saginaw and Huron. So, uh, officially, it's now the, the holiday season here, and we hope people really come out and show that Pontiac holiday spirit this weekend.
And the forecast isn't terrible, so come out Saturday morning and you won't freeze. Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that officially today is Giving Tuesday. So, you know, Black Friday is the day that traditionally large retailers move from operating at a loss to operating at a profit. Small Business Saturday was instituted to really encourage people not just to think about large retailers, but to also go to your local retailers. And I wanna say that Small Business Saturday is not a day, it is an idea, it is every day. Um, small businesses actually make up the backbone of the American economy. We really talk about large businesses because they, they get all the flashbang, but honestly, you would be surprised how quickly those large businesses would actually fall to their knees if there weren't small, local manufacturers making the widgets that go into the large products that we buy and providing a lot of the services that those companies need. But Giving Tuesday, this day was, was set up to really encourage all of us to stop and think about whatever that philanthropic agency is that you love and respect, please think about giving them, um, some money this time. It goes a very, very long way. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Garland Doyle.
No comments, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, District 1.
Man, did I miss you guys. Good evening, everyone. I wanna first say a special shout out to Mia Grant and Chris, Christine, Chrishell Griffin for allowing me to host the Small Business Saturdays at the Strand. Wasn't mentioned by anybody, but I felt that it was important that they knew that someone from the city council represented and represented well. And this organization that they put together, they put it together in 17 days, 17 days. They got the Strand, Alex Resnick. I like to point out the underdogs, because sometimes we forget the underdogs, because we like to cheer for the loudest people in the room. I know that, 'cause oftentimes I'm cheered for when I am just doing the duty and the business of the city. So I wanted to thank them. I also wanted to say that my personal comments tonight are going to be personal. I'm asking questions that I've never asked before, because I have a growing frustration with the way in which some people treat people on this, on this, on this diocese. When I got into office, um, I had a haughty attitude, and I didn't know how to talk to people, I didn't know how to approach people. And I've learned through life coaching, I've learned through therapy, I've learned through being able to de-escalate, that everybody deserves respect. And all that I'm asking for is the same respect that I give to this administration it has given to me. The same respect I give to the titles that people hold, it is given to me. So the question that you see me asking, it's not to gaslight, it's not to grandstand, it's because I have a growing frustration with things I'm seeing that are not being addressed. And when I try to address them privately, they're not being addressed. And when I put them in an email, they're not being addressed. So the only thing that I have left is to ask the questions that citizens are asking me. So I don't wanna get a call saying I'm trying to come against him. I don't have no problem with him, I like him 98% of the time. What I am doing is asking the questions that citizens are asking, because at the end of the day, we are held accountable for how we spend money, how we vote, how we interact with business owners and future business partners. And I don't wanna be the one caught up saying that mail did this, excuse me, Councilman Rutherford did this, Councilman Rutherford did that. I can hold my own and show anything if asked. Further notice, the District 1 meeting, the best District 1 meeting ever, is gonna be December the 17th at the, at the Alley Cat Cafe at 3:00 PM. It is a Christmas party. I'm asking everyone to come, anybody could come, I don't care what district it's from. It is an opportunity for us to continue to fellowship and build off of what we did at the Thanksgiving Drive. And I wanna personally thank Mike McGinnis, uh, for coming, and William Carrington, for attending the Thanksgiving, um, event. And also Brett Nicholson, who didn't get acknowledged last week, who actually bought about 20 to 25 coats. I think we need to acknowledge when people help you out and help build you up, and we have to keep doing that, even if it makes others uncomfortable when we do that, because we all want everybody to win. And on that note, good night.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Brett Nicholson, District 2.
Uh, I just wanna give, uh, two big thank yous, um, to Tim Travis and the staff at Goldner Walsh. Um, if you drive down 59 over to Telegraph's Fire Station number nine, um, they, uh, Tim Travis, um, on his own dime, went out and re-landscaped the front of that, um, of that fire station, and it just, it looks really nice. It's something that we can keep up and, and, um, you know, sometimes people do, do good things, and then it's, you know, unavoidable. Um, but, oh, oh, Carol Turpin was involved in that as well. Um, so another District 2 resident, um, that, you know, it, it, from what I'm told, that fire station, a long time ago, was featured, um, in a, in a spread for how forward their landscaping. Um, so he, he found that out and said, we'd gotta get it back to its glory, and he did a really, really nice job. And I know the guys over there are really impressed with it as well and grateful. Um, and, and another is to Renee Voight-Poiret, and I know she really doesn't like to be thanked. Um, but, but if you, if you go downtown, you, we're about to invite a lot of communities in to take part in this parade. Um, and they do show up. I mean, I can tell you from the last three years that I've had a business downtown, um, there are people who every day, you know, they're coming through saying, this is the one time of year I come to Pontiac. Um, and if you were out in downtown two days ago, um, it was a wreck. I mean, just trash everywhere, um, you know, leftover, you know, from anybody who comes through and does construction projects, uh, you know, they leave their items. Um, and Renee, um, really just every year does this, um, and I know it's, 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 it's hard work. Um, it's not a time of year you wanna be outside. Um, if you, if I saw her three or four times pass by and she had a, you know, the back of her car full of greenery, um, thank you to Main Street Pontiac for putting the lights up again. I know last year was the first year that we really got that light display. It's, it's beautiful. It, it really looks nice. Um, and, uh, you know, it makes a huge difference, um, to the people that are coming out that day, when they get that impression of this is what it's supposed to look like down here. Um, it, I thank you to Renee, 'cause she just busted her butt and begged for volunteers and got people together, but there's not enough volunteers. Um, and, and I know as we continue to expand city services, that, um, there will be fewer, um, you know, situations where we need to put out that call and, uh, but Renee does it every single year, and, and she deserves a lot of thanks. Um, and that's, I just wanna say those two thank yous.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your hospitality at your District 2 meeting last night. Proud to be a fly on the wall for you. Councilman Mikhail Goodman, the Oracle of District 3.
Uh, so the first thing I wanna say is I wanna give a little bit of congratulation to a former student of mine, because as we're heading into, uh, the Holiday Extravaganza, a ATAP student is the one from Pontiac getting, uh, the award. McKenna Beckman is one of my old high school students. I'm very happy to see, uh, that name that'll be being recognized, uh, this Saturday. Um, but separate from that, I do have to be a little bit more pointed with my comments. I, I think there is a, a couple of important things that have to be said. I think the first one, which I think many of us on this side of the, uh, dais are learning, is that, uh, we need to stop treating unserious people seriously. We need to begin to treat, uh, essentially the job that we're doing with the importance that it is, and begin to really show and bring that forward, because unfortunately, we have begun to realize for a long time, but especially now, that falsehoods muddy the water that is good governance. And if we continue to allow that to happen every single time, at some point, we will not be able to see the bottom of the lake. And I do not want that to happen when we have the opportunity to stop it. And that not only applies to, uh, certain members of the, uh, the community who are no longer in office, uh, to, uh, other audience members, members of the community, but also ourselves, because we have to make sure that we're upholding the standard, uh, that is supposed to be, uh, a functional, uh, worthwhile, meaningful government. Uh, and then the last thing I wanna say, uh, as a person who is a part of the Gen Z generation, as the youngest member of this diocese, um, I do recognize that a lot of people don't particularly have high hopes for, uh, people born after the year 2000. Uh, but as someone who I'd say is very functional on this side of the table, maybe give us a little more credit, maybe, just, just a little bit. It might be a useful, uh, worthwhile attempt. Um, but with that, I do say good night.
Honorary Gen Z member, Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5.
Thank you, brother president, but I'm a long way from Gen Z, I can tell you that.
Gen Z, Z, Z.
Way, yeah, I've been sleeping a whole lot. Anyway, uh, don't have many comments to make. I just wanted to thank Pastor Dustin McClellan for coming and sharing with us in our invocation this afternoon. He's starting a brand-new church in Pontiac, and I wish him well, and I want each and every one of you to know that. It starts in the January of next year, uh, so I'm looking forward to hearing him again, 'cause he's been to my church a couple of times speaking, so I know he's ready for the challenge. Uh, to that, I just wanna say to all, to just continue for the city. I know we're just going through our Thanksgiving season, and everybody is really anxious about getting forward to Christmas, but please remember that there is, there's a portion of our city out there that's in grief, that's in depressed, and that's sorrowful even during this city, this season, because they've lost loved ones. So please keep praying for one another and keep lifting each other up during this season, because you don't know, just to smile every now and then will make people feel better in this season. As the word says, a soft answer turns away wrath. Sometimes if you just smile at people, even though they may have said something bad to you, just remember, as the word says, we don't wrestle with flesh and blood. So if we remember that, we remember that the person that is in front of us may not be who we're really dealing with, and to love them anyway. And with that, I'll say good evening, Pontiac.
This next council member I introduce, uh, if there's anyone who's related to her in the audience, just know how loved, precious, beautiful, and a blessing she is to the 61,000 people that live in Pontiac, and the tens and tens of thousands of people that work or visit or play in Pontiac, including their parks. And so I just wanna say, your mother's amazing. Councilwoman Kathalye James, District 4.
We love you, Kathalye. Thank you. Thank you. I have just a few, uh, uh, first of all, I hope that everyone had as wonderful a Thanksgiving holiday as I had. Uh, my daughter surprised me. I didn't think that she was gonna be able to make it in, but she did make it in, so we had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is, boy, did Chuck, you know, I was going to say, I was sitting here thinking, you ought to raise your hand and tell them they need to check with AARP and see if they can find any retirees who are still interested and working. And then Chuck gets up and said, hey, you need to, you need to look at retirees, because many people are still interested in working, and that, that could be one option. So that was great that that did come up. I agree with the, I, I agree with you 100% about that, and hopefully we will pursue that. Uh, also, in terms of an announcement, the, we do have one, uh, activity going on in the city. Dan O'Dee from United Worldwide Ministry is doing a community street prayer and winter apparel distribution in the parking lot of Save-A-Lot, which is, uh, they're at the corner, almost at the corner of Columbia and, uh, and Baldwin. So I want you to keep that in mind. This is taking place on Saturday, December 10th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They're gonna be giving away, uh, free gloves, uh, free coats, food, hot chocolate and things. And they also are gonna be talking to people and ministering to people and praying for people. As, as Pastor Parker said, a lot of people are hurting. Uh, they have lost, suffered losses, uh, you know, this year, and just, you know, this is their first year, maybe without a husband, without a mother, uh, without a child. So keep in mind that, you know, be kind. And so if you, if you need help, if you live on, on the north side and you, you could use some help, please come out to this event, Saturday, December 10th, uh, from 10:00 to 2:00. And again, it's called the Community Street Prayer and Winter Apparel Distribution. It's sponsored by Dan O'Dee and the Unified Worldwide Ministries. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and truly thank you for being you and all that you do. Speaking of your district and the, and the north side, I haven't sent an email yet, but last night I was driving on Jocelyn, north of Walton, and so from the Auburn Hills city border to Walton, there are no operable streetlights, so it's very dark on Jocelyn, if you can let Public Works know.
It's been reported.
Oh, excellent. Well done.
Yes.
See, she's on it, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Uh, the debonair and intellectual and cerebral, President Pro Tem from District 6, William A. Carrington, closing comments.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. I ain't think you can top any of the things you said earlier, but that's good. I just wanna, um, just a, a couple of, uh, uh, thank yous for what I've been seeing in the community, uh, this past Thanksgiving weekend. Kudos go out to the Send Foundation, Pontiac Collective Impact, um, with Seminole Scott, as well as the Pontiac Academy of Excellence that held a giveaway, uh, this past, uh, Sunday, and all the volunteers, over 100 volunteers that came out to help that event. Uh, they were able to give out 11,000, uh, uh, gifts to this community that was donated by the Amazon Corporation. So again, thank you for that, that great event. Also, I just wanna bring the city, um, uh, something to the city attention about a young man that's a Pontiac, um, uh, youth, but he now plays for, uh, the O-O-O Ohio University Bobcats. And he had his first start in the conference championship- And he had his first start in the conference championship this past, last Tuesday. In that game, he had 261 total yards, and was responsible for TDs for that particular college. And he'd be representing this city proudly this Saturday at Ford Field, as the Ohio State, not Ohio State, Ohio University Bobcats actually play for the MAC Championship. So I just wanted to let the community know that we need to support that young man in spirit. He's a Pontiac resident, and he's a very proud, and he's a student athlete. I've been knowing his family for probably about five years now, so he's an excellent, CJ Harris, CJ Harris. He's an excellent student athlete, and he's going to represent the city well this Saturday. Some of the things I was going to mention, everyone else has mentioned already, but I need to repeat this, please join me and We Care Neighborhood Association this Friday for the Sixth District Annual, we've been doing this for about eight years now, Christmas or holiday potluck, and the Sixth District is definitely the best district in the city. I don't care what District 1 is talking about.
We'll give you the best potluck in the city.
Well, again, good night, and thank everyone.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, District 7. I want to emphasize, I can't think of a good acronym, so come on out to District 7. It's fun. On December 12th, 7:00 PM, it's our December meeting, but it will be our holiday celebration. It's at Prospect Church, 351 Prospect Street, at the corner of Sanford and Prospect, in the dynamic and lucky District Number 7. So please, share that information with anyone. It sometimes is a very accessible way, if they haven't really attended before, it just feels a little less intimidating, so they can be in the swing of their neighborhood and take action. There are many things I could say, but we've talked a lot, so how about I say, that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Here, no discussion, we'll call an adjournment. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Semi-as, no-nas.
That motion carries.